Okay. Good evening, everyone. This meeting is held by way of Zoom remote video conference pursuant to Section 5 Public Law 1975. This is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of meetings for 2023 in the news record of South Orange Maplewood and the Star Ledger in December of 2022 and by filing of said notice in the office of the municipal clerk. Notification with access information for the meeting via phone conference and Zoom was made public by publication in the news record and on the township's website. Ms. Lewis, would you please call roll?
Mayor Daffis?
Here.
Committeewoman Adams?
Here.
Ms. Latham?
Here.
Mr. Titus is excused, Mr. Carlson is excused, Mr. Frye?
Here.
Ms. De Nooser?
Here.
Ms. Ward?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Stig?
Here.
And Chair Pashoda?
Here, thank you. Whereas Section 7 provides that the planning board has the discretion to permit prohibit or relegate the active participation of the public at any meeting, whereas it is the desire of this planning board to comply with the provisions of this act and at the same time, conduct its business in an orderly and expeditious manner. Now therefore be it resolved by the planning board of the township of Maplewood that it does prohibit, except as set forth in the formal agenda, active participation in the deliberations of the planning board at all of its regular meetings. May I please have a motion to accept the operating procedures?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mayor Daffis?
Yes.
Committeewoman Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Latham?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Ms. De Nooser?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Stig?
Yes.
And Chair Pashoda?
Yes. Um, the minutes of our last meeting in, in June, on the second Tuesday in June, were provided electronically. Does anyone from the planning board have any corrections or edits to those minutes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Daffis?
Yes.
Committeewoman Adams?
Absame.
Ms. Latham?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Stig?
Yes.
And Chair Pashoda?
Yes. All right then, um. This evening, we are going to continue with our hearing with respect to the draft of the Maplewood Master Plan. I'm delighted to once again welcome the folks from BFJ, our professional planners that have been working with us diligently, working for us diligently, um, to draft the master plan. They have engaged with a cross-section of Maplewood's residents, uh, Maplewood employees, people who work in Maplewood, enjoy Maplewood and, um, have put together a, 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 a great plan for us. Um, since our last meeting, there have been a number of people who have supplied additional commentary and BFJ Planning has continued to incorporate those, uh, over the course of the last, uh, the last month. Um, I'd like to just bring a couple of items to people's attention. There are three new maps in the plan, um.
Uh, I gotta, I gotta go to.
Maps that reflect, uh, the percentage of impervious coverage across Maplewood, our tree equity score and urban heat island effect. Um, we heard from constituents who felt strongly about, uh, the two parcels at Valley Street and Pearson Road. And we've decided not to, um, we, we've decided to remove the recommendation that they be rezoned. Uh, there's also been a number of edits to the historic preservation section, uh, some commentary with respect to athletic fields, um, some clarification on a number of other issues. All of the comments that we received were posted to the township website. All of BFJ's edits to the plan since our last meeting have been posted to the township website. So at this time, um, I'd like to start with the planning board and find out if there are any planning board members that have any additional commentary or questions regarding the draft of the master plan at this time.
There, woman. I just needed some clarification from you on when you mentioned the things that, um, you know, the changes you just went through.
Uh huh.
Um. Were they incorporated in the last document we received from, uh, planning, BFJ planning? Or? Have we not seen that yet? Cause I got a couple of BFJ planning documents with changes. I just want to make sure we're all like looking at the same final, you know, final version.
I'm going to ask Susan Travati to, uh, to address that question.
Uh, it should be the, um, the version that's embedded in the agenda for tonight. It's dated July 7th. So that is the latest and greatest, um, there was an earlier version sent in late June, but the July 7th version incorporates that previous version as well as some additional.
Okay, so my other question is those changes are just taken directly from comments of planning board members and incorporated? Or we're going to discuss all those perspective changes from fellow planning board members?
They, uh, they reflect some comments from planning board members as well as all comments received from members of the public. So what you have in that July 7th document is the suggested revisions to incorporate or, or address all of those comments received. Um, and I think it's, it's up to the board. I'm happy to go through them tonight, um, if you feel that, that you want to kind of take that time.
Yeah, I mean, I for one was like out of town and I just think for, so we're all like voting on the same document, I think it would be helpful, um, because some of them may or may not be agreeable to some people. So, um, I think it's fair to, since we've gone over everything else so thoroughly, you know, I think it's the best, uh, if with respect to you, Chairwoman, if that's okay with you.
Um, if, if Susan is willing to, uh, to provide, uh, an overview of the changes, then, um, for clarity purposes, I'm absolutely amenable to that.
Sure, I have absolutely no problem doing that. Um, I will try to go through them fairly expeditiously, um, so this is why I printed it out for myself, just in case. Um, one of the comments from, uh, board members last time was on, you know, some priorities and, and the need to make those more clear, what some of the top priority areas are in terms of recommendations. So we did flesh that language out a bit, um, suggest that we suggest adding three new priority areas, which I think reflects what we heard from the board as well as the public. And that is, um, you know, addressing the scale of development in residential neighborhoods. So we've added that to sort of the top tier priorities, um, historic preservation. We heard a lot, um, on all sides regarding that issue, um, you know, the desire for, uh, for more preservation and, and, you know, preserve more of our assets, but also, um, you know, balancing that with clarity in the process and transparency in that process. So we've suggested, um, adding that as a priority. And then the third one is tree canopy and impervious coverage. Um, I think that addresses what we heard from the public as well as some of the comments we got from the environmental advisory committee. Um, a couple of other changes, we've added a suggestion to establish a master plan implementation committee. Then that's in the language that introduces the, the implementation master plan. Um, we will also graphically indicate in that implementation table, um, action items that address the priority items that we talked about. Um, and then there was a, um, desire for on the cost column to, um, clarify when there might be no cost to items and, and there's not a ton of those, but they do exist, um, where it's either low or no cost. So we have, um, recommended those changes as well. Um, within the historic preservation discussion, uh, within the strategies and recommendations, we do have some beefed up language there, um, which again speaks to that balance of, you know, preservation of assets and also strengthening, uh, and, um, clarifying the process itself, uh, engaging owners of historic designated properties or properties that are eligible to be designated, um, making sure that that process is subject, not subjective, but objective. Um, we have some more, um, you know, concrete suggestions on, uh, historic preservation that should be considered when the township does a new historic preservation element. So that whole section is recommended to be kind of beefed up a bit. Um. On, I think that the chair, the chair mentioned this already, the Valley Street and Pearson Road was previously designated on the future land use plan as a retail node. Um, and the recommendation is to, to eliminate that recommendation and to keep it as, as an existing residential zone. Um, on the park side zone, the PS zone, this was a comment at the last public hearing, a concern about the, the recommendation in the draft to rezone that, that zone as neighborhood business. Um, and the point was brought up and, and further research that neighborhood business does allow, um, automobile service stations and gas stations, which would probably not be appropriate, uh, across Memorial Park, uh, even though I think there is a service station that might exist, but you don't think the board probably wants new ones. So, um, we are recommending to eliminate that recommendation. But that also brought up, I think, a loophole in the existing PS zone, which, um, would apparently allow fast food restaurants, um, and they are not allowed in the neighborhood business zone, the retail business zone or the highway business district. Um, so the recommendation is to make the PS zone comparable to those other ones and not allow, uh, fast food restaurants. Um, it was a comment, uh, at the last meeting from the public about the, uh, the recommended rezoning of the rest of Valley, Valley Street to neighborhood business and just concern about the traffic, uh, at the high school. Uh, so we suggested some language that traffic impacts of that rezoning need to be considered. Um, there is existing rezoning right across the street from the high school, but certainly any, any rezoning should take that into account. Um, branding, um, and Councilwoman, I know this was your, your comment from last time. There was a concern about, um, any kind of township branding, kind of overriding existing, uh, CID branding. And so we've clarified that language to make clear that, you know, this is really branding of sort of township-wide assets like parks, municipal parking lots, um, community facilities, community gateways, that sort of thing. Um, I think this also came up last time, the difference between a redevelopment and rehabilitation designation. So we've suggested some additional language on that, making clear, um, you know, what you can and can't do, uh, with one versus the other. Um, urgent care was a concern brought up by a member of the public. Uh, the existing recommendation was that urgent care facilities be permitted in all business zones. And the concern was that they might not be appropriate for some business zones. So the recommendation now is to only, um, or to only allow them in the HB or OB zones, um, which are your more, um, uh, auto-oriented zones. There were some minor typos and edits, um. You know, unfortunately, we said township council a few times instead of township committee. So we've gone and done a search for that and I think we caught them all. Um, there was a mistaken description of Ritz or Field, we've corrected that. Um, there are a couple incorrect references to PSE and G, we've corrected those. Um, there was a concern of member of the public about reference to the movie theater site versus the movie theater building, so we made that change. Um. Uh, there was a, there was a request from the member of the public, um, that when we have a recommendation and existing recommendation to consider or explore permitting to family zones in some larger lots within single-family zones, two-family homes, um, and that we add language, um, recommending that, um, it really be considered especially for lots that are within close walking distance to retail and services. So we have suggested that language. And then finally, there was a request to add a reference to the NJ DOT model ordinance for complete and green streets. So we added that. Um, so that was all largely, uh, comments made, you know, at the June 13th hearing, uh, and submitted sort of around that time. Since then, we got some initial additional comments. We got some edits from the environmental advisory committee, which were, um, you know, purely technical. They were, there were a lot of them, but they were all in the existing condition section, really just kind of clarifying, uh, language, beefing up language. Um, they're good edits, so we really recommend accepting those in full. That includes the three new maps that the chair referenced, which are just nice additional maps to provide context. Um, there was a comment from a planning board member about the Rickleton Square concept plan. Um, you know, hoping that it could go further in actually potentially eliminating some more parking to expand that green space. So we added a note to that diagram that that's something the township could consider. Um, obviously we need to be based on some additional analysis. Um, I think the chair referenced athletic fields. That was brought up by a couple of planning board members, um, that the plan needs to speak to that and that this is a major issue, uh, for the township. So we've suggested some additional language there. Um, there was a desire just to expand on the idea of parking maximums. So we have some language about kind of a little bit more about what, what those are and how, um, you know, how they differ from parking minimums, um, you know, what the benefits might be and a reference in the PRB B zone in particular, that if you had parking maximums, uh, it might reduce some of the required parking need, which makes some of those lots more viable. Uh, they're very shallow lots, so parking is difficult along Springfield Avenue. So that might open up more, um, opportunity for revitalization there. Um, there was a comment, we had some language previously about on Springfield Avenue in the PRB zone, the inward-facing supportive residential amenities need to be behind, uh, a, a layer of retail. Um, the idea really there was to continue the active pedestrian oriented, you know, street front, but I think it was rightfully pointed out that, you know, residential lobbies are active and, and that's sort of counter to some of the design guidelines in that zone. So we've clarified that, um, really kind of thinking about when it's structured parking, that it should be behind a liner of retail, um, again, to maintain that active street front. Um, some, some additional suggested language about missing middle housing to sort of flesh that out a bit. Um, there's a question and comment on context-sensitive zoning. So we've clarified, um, kind of what is intended by that, um, that it's really kind of targeted zoning adjustments within the residential zones to promote, uh, more of a consistent scale. Um, it's not design review that you can't really do that in existing residential neighborhoods unless they're historic districts. Um, some additional suggested language on design that we want to promote in two-family homes. Um, you know, really limiting the number and/or the frontage of attached garages along the street front edge and then promoting the idea of a single entry door with a shared vestibule to kind of promote, um, more of a, um, a low-scale, um, you know, smaller scale look. Um, a member of the planning board suggested incorporating sustainability into the township's branding, which is a cool idea, recognizing the, the work that the township has done and will continue to do. Um, so I think that's it. There were a few, um, suggestions that we recommended, no, no changes. There was a public comment on, um, allowing more restaurants in industrial zones. There was a concern that that could start to push out established industrial uses. Um, we already had language in the plan, kind of speaking to that concern and, and really speaking to lim- limiting the intrusion of industrial, I'm sorry, residential, sorry, red restaurant uses in industrial zones. So I think that was addressed already. Um, there was a comment on relaxing parking requirements or reducing parking requirements in the PRV zone. Again, I think we already had language that spoke to that. Um, and then this was a comment from a member of the planning board about, um, the recommendation on reducing the minimum acreage requirement for, um, two fam- or for multifamily housing in the R24 zone. Um, and really the intent with that recommendation is to recognize that currently, um, the, um, the minimum acreage requirement is not met by any, any lot in the township. Um, so effectively it prohibits multifamily in the R24 zone. So, um, you know, basically it's a kind of a meaningless regulation right now. Um, multifamily is allowed both in the R24 and all the single-family zones within what's called the transition zone, which is a whole other confusing thing that we're recommending cleaning up. Um, so just the, the overall recommendation is to, um, address the lack of standards in the transitional zones across the board, single-family and R24 zone, and consider reducing that acreage requirement in the R24 zone, um, to something that might actually, um, be possible in the R24 zone. So that's, that's what that recommendation is all about. Uh, so that is the, the crux of the July 7th document. Um, since that was sent, there have been some additional comments. There was one comment received regarding the Raleigh River, um, corridor plan, a request to put just a note on an existing map that was, you know, pretty much a technical change. We agree with that. Um, there was a series of comments from the township historian, which were all, again, technical in nature. They were all, uh, except for a couple of them were mostly in the existing additions piece and it was all kind of factual, um, you know, correcting some things, clarifying others, adding some language at, at her request. Um, so we have no issue with any of those changes. And then there were one or two sent, I think today, on historic preservation, again, from, uh, from some of the homeowners of, of homes that are either currently or potentially designated. And, um, I think they reiterated some of the comments that you've probably previously seen. I think that the language that we already shared, um, does address those concerns. So I hope I didn't fly too fast, but, um, Councilwoman, that's, that's it. Um, you should be up to speed and, um, happy to entertain more discussion or questions from the board on any of that.
Uh, Susan, thank you for walking us through all of that. And thanks to Adele, our clerk, for putting it all together.
Keeping up.
Yeah, keeping up with all of this stuff. Um, I, I wonder if it might be worth it tonight, since I see a lot of members of the public that we didn't have with us before. Uh, I think it might be worth it to explain what we're doing tonight and what we're not doing. Uh, yeah, so I wonder if you would give us a few, uh, remarks on that? And, and maybe, uh, Chair Pashoda can also join in as necessary as well.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, for folks who are joining tonight, who were not at the June 13th, first night of the public hearing, we did do an extensive presentation that night. I think it was just about an hour. We were trying to spare you all from seeing it again tonight. Um, I, I think, uh, it's, it was recorded, so hopefully perhaps those who weren't able to attend that night might have been able to check it out later, um, but it did go through all of the draft recommendations and strategies. So I think, um, the intent tonight, as I understand, unless the chair, uh, says otherwise, was really to hear from the remaining members of the public, um, who perhaps didn't get a chance to speak yet or wanted to, um, add something if they'd already spoken and then give board members a final opportunity as well.
Yeah, I just want to.
Go ahead.
I just want to add that, um, for, for anyone who might not be familiar, this is the culmination of 15, 16 months of work. Uh, BFJ Planning has, uh, conducted extensive meetings with lots of different segments of our community. Uh, they've reached out to, uh, professionals, to residents, to organizations, to, um, religious leaders, to, uh, community groups. So, um, so tonight is really, uh, uh, the last opportunity for members of the public to share any final comments, um, that they might have on the plan. Um, because there, there has been a, a great, a number of opportunities for people to comment either directly or through organizations that they may belong to. Um, the, uh, one of the, one of the things that I find, uh, validating about the outcome that we have before us, the, the draft that we have before us, is that BFJ Planning has said on a number of occasions that they've heard many of the same things over and over. And so that is an indication that they've, um, they've heard from a lot of different people, but yet they've heard the same concerns, um, they've, they've had a lot of really positive feedback. They know how much so many of us enjoy living, working and playing in Maplewood, um, but that there are opportunities for us to, uh, to do a few things better and, uh, that will hopefully strengthen our community. Um, but that the things that they've heard, they're hearing over and over, which says that, okay, it, it's not as if anything new or significant has been cropping up. So I think that is, uh, further validation that we are at a, a good point to bring this process potentially to a close.
Thank you, Chair Pashoda. Uh, I wonder if you might, uh, further edify or clarify what the plan is itself? It's a policy document, uh, it's not an action document. It makes recommendations for the township to consider. Can you walk us a little bit through that, please?
Sure, so every township in the state of New Jersey is required to have a master plan and they're required to either update it or rewrite it every 10 years. Uh, we started this process, uh, just a little bit past that. Um, but, uh, decided that this was a good opportunity for us to completely rewrite our master plan. Our, our last master plan was, uh, 11, almost 12 years ago, and that was an update, if I remember correctly. Um, and, uh, and maybe it has changed a lot in the last 10 years and we need a strong plan that reflects that. And so, um, BFJ has got, has, has guided us through this process, uh, with a number of, as I said, a number of opportunities for community engagement. Um, they have, the, the beginning of the plan thoroughly outlines Maplewood today. Um, who we are demographically, um, how our land is used. Uh, we are, you know, a, a well-developed community and, um, and many of our buildings have been here for a long time. Um, but there's, there are opportunities to do better at how we use the space that we have. Um. And so, uh, this plan will guide the planning board in the years to come. Uh, once it is adopted, we will start, that we, the planning board will start using it as a guideline of, as we hear applications and requests for relief from, uh, various ordinances. The zoning board will also start using it almost immediately as they hear applications for, uh, for, um, I'm at a loss for words.
Variances?
For variances and, um, to change permitted uses and whatnot. Um, while a master plan is a planning board document, it is a document for the community and a document to use, to allow the community to say what it wants. And that's how we got here, uh, and it is a, a document to hold us accountable. So when the planning board and the zoning board do hear applications, we will be assessing whether or not those applications are, um, in, in line with what is laid out in the master plan. But it is, um, ultimately up to the township committee to make determinations on, uh, what needs to be implemented. Uh, there are proposed zoning changes in there. There are proposed, um, changes to signage. There are proposed, um, there are recommendations with respect, I shouldn't say proposed. There are recommendations, um, to change zoning, to change, um, to, to add bike lanes to, there, there are, there are dozens of recommendations and all, and some of those can be done at little or no cost, but others will require, uh, funding. And ultimately it is up to the township committee to determine which things to address and in what order to address them. While I absolutely appreciate that BFJ has provided some guidance with respect to, um, setting priorities, ultimately, uh, funding will dictate some of that and the township committee will make decisions with respect to that and then offer them to the, the planning board and the zoning board for, um, for future use. So I did see a question in the chat. Somebody was asking, um, uh, was asking how this makes Maplewood better. Um, there are a number of ways that this could make Maplewood better. Um, implementation of things that give us an opportunity to use our parks and recreation space, uh, could potentially, uh, allow Maplewood residents and, and guests and visitors uh, opportunities to be and stay healthier. Um, it can allow us to more equitably use the space that we have. It can allow us to, uh, do a better job of, um, of ensuring that our community is the community that we want it to be. So, um, so I think there are a number of different ways that the master plan can help us, uh, help make Maplewood better and help us be, uh, a, a better community.
The, the only thing I would add, call two things, uh, Chair Pashoda, um, first on just making it better. There, there are a number of recommendations that deal with, uh, transportation improvements that I think are really at, at their root, designed to address safety. So hopefully that, that makes things a lot better for pedestrians in particular and bicyclists. Um, and then the second thing I wanted to say is that because it is a policy plan and is not regulation in and of itself, um, implementation, uh, particularly regulatory changes, but many of the other recommendations will be an additional process, um, done by the township committee that will involve additional public input and, um, and, and opportunities, uh, to weigh in on, on those proposals as well.
Thank you. So at this point, um, I'd like to, I'd like to proceed if there are any other members of the planning board who want to share any, uh, have, have any remaining questions, want to share any remaining thoughts with respect to, uh, the, the master plan? And once we have gone through those, then we will open it up to members of the public. So I'd like to, um, uh, I'd like to welcome, uh, member, uh, Liz Ward to share your thoughts or questions.
Okay, uh, thank you, Chairwoman. Um, yes, this looks great. Um, I have a couple of questions on some of the edits that were made. Um, it was under the, the minor edits for page 83. Uh, there was a recommendation, um, you suggested, uh, limiting the two-family. Well, it's like an exploration, but limiting it to half-mile. limiting the two-family, well, it's like an exploration, but limiting it to a half mile of a business zone. And I'm just worried that that could potentially exclude a lot of the larger lots that are, that would otherwise perhaps, you know, meet the, you know, the conditional requirements for a two-family home. So it just seems like it's maybe, I'm, I agree with the desire to, you know, be within walking distance of a retail business zone, but I'm also worried about just, you know, keeping exclusionary zoning on some of those larger lots that are, you know, more than a half mile. So I just think it's maybe a little bit too much detail at this point for the recommendation. Okay. So there's that one. And the other one, also relating to two-family zones with the promotion of the single-door entry to a shared festival. And I do wish Mr. Titus was here tonight because I do believe if there is a one, a single door to a two-family or multi-family, then there's additional code requirements which might make it more expensive to build. And I also, I, I don't find it offensive to have two doors. So I don't know if we're trying to hide, you know, people. I, I just, you know, I know you wanted to, I think the scale, if we can address the scale of the building, so they are house, single-family house size scale, that I don't think the two doors are, you know, a problem. So those are my two, two big thoughts of, on the edits. So for consideration. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fred, please go ahead with your questions or comments.
Oh, just a follow-up to Ms. Adams' question about the documents that we're reviewing. The agenda that I received had, did not have a six, sorry, a seven, seven version embedded in it. It had the previous master plan draft. So I just wanted to clarify that. Are we actually reviewing the final draft? Because I don't believe I received that.
I'm reviewing it. I do have it in my file. I think it was sent today.
Oh, I'm looking at the agenda that Adele sent on July fifth. And that has the, the agenda and embedded within that is the five thirty-one twenty twenty-three draft that we viewed last week. So was that recent today, Adele? And I did not see that.
Mr. Friday, I, I think there's some confusion. It's only the rewrites that were distributed, not a complete revision of the mass, the master plan that's on the website is still the one that's dated May thirty-first. Is that correct, Susan?
Yes.
Okay, I misunderstood your comments earlier than Susan. Okay, thank you. So we're.
Yeah, what, what I was going through was, it's, I don't know, about six to eight pages of the recommended revisions to that May thirty-first draft. And that document that I was going through was just a word document. It was dated July seventh. So if you were looking at an agenda from July fifth, that probably wasn't the latest, but, but I know that the July seventh version was, is in the agenda that's on the township's website for this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. News, please go ahead.
Hi, hi, everyone. I, I just wanted to, to add on to the, the two comments that Ms. Ward flagged were the, the two that really did strike me. I see that there's some comments also from public as to the concealing of two-family homes with a single door, not understanding any of sort of the contracting implications for that. But I, I just wanted to get a point of clarification as to sort of, if we are to approve this, what level of flexibility do we as a planning board have as it relates to the entire document and also to these proposed edits?
I think what would, what you would have before you tonight is the May thirty-first full document with the changes that we had, I had just gone through and any additional changes you would like to make tonight. So the comments that Liz brought up would be, you know, a revision to the revisions, as they may be. Basically, not accepting a couple of the recommendations that are in that July seventh document. And so just to recap for the public, it was both of them pertaining to two families. One was to remove the additional text that had been proposed on focusing two families, two-family homes within single-family zones within a half mile of retail and services. And then the second change was, you know, not necessarily requiring that two-family homes have a single door. So that was, I think, what I captured, Liz, I hope.
Thank you, Susan.
All right. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Adams.
Yeah, so thanks for the clarification, Tim, on getting the, which document we're looking at, because I'm looking at the, the changes that Ms. Lewis set out today. So I know, I don't want to open up a big fight about athletic fields on this call, for sure. But I do want to try, I think the comment, the add a bullet to number twelve athletic fields, add a bullet on page one oh six as follows. There's a typo that has in like the third line that says drainage conditions are can be for. But more importantly, there were not just the twenty twenty-two referendum, but there, there, somebody needs to mute. There was a referendum, what, ten years prior? So whether, for better or worse, or like it or not, the community overwhelmingly voted down the turf. So I guess what I'd like is a calming of the, the sort of political slant in that paragraph and just the facts. Like, we, we need better athletic fields, getting more athletic fields is difficult. If you're going to add anything about it, add maybe the municipality, both South Orange, Maplewood should require the school district to allow the community to use their artificial turf fields or their fields since they use our parks. So it, it's more like, I, I'd rather be a little less slanted in that wording. Because, yeah, whether the issue is there or not, you know, we've all done it, but it's been, you know, out on referendum twice and voted down. And I just don't want, I don't think it's appropriate in the master plan to have such political tension.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying, I'm trying to understand the specific language that needs to be removed. So any reference to the twenty twenty-two referendum is getting into politics, I guess, is what I'm hearing.
No, it says there are not enough fields and the twenty twenty-two referendum vote to prohibit the use of turf. First of all, it should be artificial turf because turf can also mean grass. Without identifying an alternative has only exacerbated the issues, which is not necessarily the case. So that's, that's kind of political, right?
Okay, so we can strike that whole, that whole second part of that sentence after.
Yeah, just basically, the basic premise is to pay more attention to the fields, more management of the fields, to make them more playable with less, fewer cancellations or whatever the issue is, but just, just the facts.
Okay, just the facts, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, absolutely. Understood.
Yep, I, I agree. Ms. Adams, thank you. We, that it should be focused on the problem and the solution and not the history and the politics.
Thank you, Mr. Friday. That's why I like you so much.
One question.
I fully disagree like the old days of politics.
One, one question about the facts is, do we want to maintain not only the points about maintenance that you made, Nancy, but also a capacity?
Capacity meaning how many?
Yeah, lack, lack of, lack of capacity because it's not only maintenance. Let's assume all the fields were well-maintained and perfect. There's still a capacity issue factually.
I think, Stephanie, I want to just read you some of the current language that I think addresses that, but you tell me if it doesn't. Currently, the recommendation is that it says, there is an urgent need for improvements to athletic field facilities with a focus on durability and low maintenance requirements, new lighting and new or expanded facilities. So I think that that last piece, newer expanded facilities, could address the capacity, but if you want us to be more explicit, we're happy to address that as well. Yeah, we can say newer expanded facilities to address capacity issues.
I, I would make it newer, yeah, because newer expanded facilities could be a fieldhouse.
True. Yeah. Okay, great.
Any other comments from the members of the planning board before we open it up to the public? All right. At this time, I invite members of the public to use the raise your hand function. And we will try to call on you on, in an expeditious manner so that we can hear your comments and thoughts on the draft of the master plan and the most recent, the most recent edits. When I do call on you, please state your name and your address so that we know your connection to Maplewood and, and we'll go forward. So we'll start with Mr. Peter Henderson. Please go ahead.
Hi, how's it going?
Hi. Good.
I just wanted to bring some attention to that third point on the revision list. It's discussing the retail note, land use category. Oh, by the way, sorry, Peter Henderson. I live at forty Burnett Street. And yeah, it's suggesting to remove the two parcels at Valley Street and Pearson Road from the designation as retail node. Yeah, so this has been kind of a hot topic of discussion in our neighborhood. And I guess I just wanted to say that I'm a bit disappointed with this revision. I think there's a strong sense in the neighborhood that we don't want change down there. We don't want anything to change. Unfortunately, the plant nursery down there has been gone for a little over a year now, and what's left in this place is an empty lot, which is not exactly the most desirable thing in our neighborhood. So I actually would really appreciate for that area to be re-designated as a retail node and for there to be some kind of encouragement from the town to actually create some development there. I know a lot of the focus of the master plan has been on alternative modes of transportation, walking, cycling. That's really difficult for people who don't live very close to Maplewood Village or Springfield Avenue and creating stronger areas for commercial development dispersed throughout the town, for example, like the area on the border with South Orange, on Ridgewood Road. Creating more places like that, I think is really important to encourage people to not drive and to bike and to walk and to create more of a sense of community. All right, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Philipate, do you want to respond to that, given the, you know, what you heard from other community members?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's clearly not consensus. You know, we also heard that a stronger desire to keep the status quo. There was some concern because those particular parcels, I believe, were, were approved as part of a zoning board variance. So there's some question about how much you could change the designation and what that would do to those particular properties. I think ultimately, it's a decision of the board, whether you want to kind of maintain the status quo there. It, it is a residential zone now. And those, those uses were permitted by variances, I understand.
Thank you. And now I'm going to ask Ms. Linda, Linda's iPad, to go ahead. Please give us your full name as well as your address and then go ahead with your question or comment. You're still muted. Hold on. Can you please unmute yourself?
Yeah.
Sorry, yes, we can.
My name is Linda McNeilis. I have lived at twenty-six Burnett Street for forty-five years. So I'm, you know, I mean, yes, it's been a long time. But I have, you know, I just had issues with, you know, the changes. And I understand Peter, you know, who lives at forty, thinking change is good. But I have to say, you know, over forty-five years, I have seen such great changes in Maplewood. And I, I just need to understand how this whole thing came about. And maybe it's just me being, you know, the old person in, in the neighborhood. So I, I, my question is, how did this whole thing start?
The master plan or, or just more specific?
No, no, the master plan.
Well, every, every municipality in the state is required to have a master plan and, and has for, I don't even know how long. So this, this process started over a year ago with some online community engagement and then progressed to in-person meetings, to progress to meetings with various constituents from across the community. BFJ met with municipal employees, met with different organizations, different groups, held meetings with, that were open to the public, requested, requested community participation and has compiled thousands of comments from people throughout our community, people, mostly people who live here, but also people who work here, people who visit here, people who consider Maplewood a special place in their hearts. And so, so this has been an extensive process over the past sixteen, seventeen months. And so this, this evening, we are at the end of this process and the, the draft of the master plan is the culmination of all of that work of what BFJ has assessed about Maplewood and, and Maplewood and what it is today, how it's changed over the past ten years and the recommendations for potential, you know, changes to strengthen our community.
And I so appreciate that. Thank you for answering. So I mean, can I just bring something else up about two-family?
Certainly.
Okay, I owned actually two houses in Maplewood. Actually, three houses in Maplewood. Two of them, the one I actually own now, were two-family homes. But there were two family homes back during World War Two, probably. So as far as the two doors next to each other, I will say that my home has two entrances, one in the back of the house. So we have two staircases. So that's one way to get around the whole two-family thing. You know, instead of having two doors next to each other, you can have a door in the front of the house and a door in the back of the house, if that's a possibility. Just, I mean, it's just my.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you for that, if, if Chair, if you'll allow me to respond. I think the basic recommendation is that two-family homes should be, you know, I think to Liz Ward's point earlier, you know, of the scale of single-family homes that are in the surrounding neighborhood. So whether that's two doors next to each other, whether that's a single entrance with a shared vestibule or two different entrances on different facades of the house, I think each of those, you could achieve that, that, you know, that smaller scale in a two-family home.
Well, what I'm saying is it does, it doesn't read as a two-family home.
Right.
If there's a back staircase and a, or even just a back door and a front door.
Right, understood. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, we're happy to have your comments. Thank you. Um, now we'll hear from Liz. If you would please state your full name and your address and then please go ahead with your comment or question. There was someone who had their hand up with the name, just Liz. I don't have a last name. All right, perhaps she will return. We'll go ahead now with Ellen Sideman. If you please state your name, I'm sorry, state your address and then go ahead with your questions or comments.
Hi, I'm Ellen Sideman. We live at fifty-eight Pearson Road. And we've been here for twenty years. I have a two-pronged question. I think that one of the concerns in our neighborhood about additional retail at the end of our roadway is traffic concerns and the safety of our children. There are already significant issues sometimes with people speeding down Pearson. down Pearson, especially on the dead end where they realize that they have gotten to a wrong street. Um, so there has been a, a traffic concern discussed in a, in a residential area. And that would surely increase with um, additional retail stores. So I would like to know what has been discussed about that. And then I'll tell you the other part of my question. I would also like to better understand how um, the decision will be made um, when stores start applying to be part of whatever new resident uh, retail uh, opportunities exist uh, where Pearson Mill used to be.
Here, do you want me to respond to that?
Please go ahead.
So in the May thirty first draft plan, there was a recommendation to uh, to designate those two parcels uh, where the mill and the former nursery, I believe, are located on Pearson Valley um, as a small retail node, essentially, um, you know, trying to maintain kind of the status quo, but recognizing that there, those are not residential uses, they're in a residential zone. Um, the way that they were permitted was a zoning board variance. So the intent was to largely preserve those two parcels as very, very small-scale commercial uses and nothing beyond those two parcels. There were concerns raised at that, uh, about that recommendation. I think speaking to what you were just saying about the potential for retail. Um, and so the current recommendation is to eliminate that suggestion and essentially retain those parcels in their current residential zoning, no change whatsoever. Um, and certainly nothing beyond those two parcels would, would be anything other than what it currently is, which is residential. So that's what is currently before the board.
And I'd just like to add that um, some of the concern that led us to, led to the decision to uh, keep things as is was uh, not only concern about traffic, um, but also concern about uh, the potential for restaurants if it were to become a, a retail area. So um, so that's how we got to where we are.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you have another question? Or I thought you had another?
Um, well, it had been um, how um, whatever uh, did come in that was new would, would be ultimately chosen. I mean, you know, Millstone could get busy, but it was at the end of the street um, to some extent. There's Wykert, there was a um, dance. So anyway, how, how would the um, how would decisions be made about which new tenants could buy or get in there?
So my understanding is that those uses were permitted by, by variance from the zoning boards. So the variance runs with the land. So any potential future use there would have to be consistent with whatever variance conditions the zoning board originally gave. Um, and I don't, I, I don't know what those were, um, but I would imagine they were, you know, that variance was fairly limited when it was granted.
All right. Um, I actually did have one other question, and that may or may not be applicable to what's being discussed here, because this was something I saw maybe a month ago. But there is um, some um, drawing I had seen of Pearson Road and there was um, some talk of building um, affordable housing on our, on the street. Is this something that's part of what we're being, is being discussed here or that's a different matter?
Um, I'm not aware of okay, any, any plan in that location.
Thank you.
Nor am I.
Okay, thank you very much. And thanks for all the thought that you put into this plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Helm Camp, please go ahead.
Evening, Dave Helm Camp, five seventy-one Prospect Street. Um, I wanted to uh, offer a vote of support for the branding, both its original drafting and, and to rewrite. I think it really does in an indirect way hit on the themes like circulation, inclusion, connectivity. And particularly around the parks and, and in the smaller business districts that could benefit from that additional sense of identity. But I fully agree it shouldn't go beyond that to things like design guidelines or anything. I also thought that the treatment of the missing middle was, was very good. I can imagine that would be a very lively debate um, and not easy to codify. Are there examples you could share with us at some point of towns that have, have moved in this direction? And have some record of success? That would be great. The um, I had a, a, a document question. Just, just for clarification, there, there are two sections that talk about land use. And I know that one of them is intended as the land use element of the master plan. Um, does that section have any stature at all different than the rest of the document? In other words, is it also entirely recommendations?
Um, yes, although uh, any, any application needs to be consistent with that land use plan. Whether that's planning board or zoning board, well, it, it is the land use element of the master plan.
Okay. So what's written there applies even in advance of any zoning changes that, that we might contemplate. Is that we, wouldn't the zoning have to be put in place first?
The, no, the policy planning document needs to be in place before new zoning. So the zoning should be consistent with the plan. If it's not, uh, then you might need to tweak the plan if it's zoning that, you know, that is really appropriate, that the township wants. Or you would need to adjust the zoning to be consistent with the master plan.
Okay, so it's actually a pretty substantial um, statement, given, given the thoroughness that you um, approached it with.
Correct.
There's a lot of changes there. Okay, um, and uh, let's see, the last thing I wanted to mention was that uh, I um, I saw the changes in relation to Parker and Valley, and I know that I had am I still there? I know that I had made some comments on that at the last meeting. My thinking at that time was not just a matter of minimizing the impact to the high school. It was also a question of stepping back and looking at uses that might be supportive to the high school community. Um, and, and or coordinating the high school, or rather, the Board of Ed's use of their land, which is adjacent to the proposed expansion of the uh, NB zone. Um, those are all my comments. Thanks for, for fantastic effort.
Same. Thank you. Uh, now we'll turn to Kate Smith Loudon. Please share your address and go ahead with your questions or thoughts.
Absolutely. So um, my name is Kate Smith Loudon. I'm a historical homeowner. Um, eighty-one Parker, the Aaron Brown House. I'm broadcasting to live from the backyard. Um, I just wanted to thank Susan for taking the time to meet with historical homeowners, consider our points in the master plan and um, make some recommendations based on that pursuit. Um, and also just like, thank you all for going through this, as you said, sixteen, seventeen-month effort for the master plan on behalf of all of us, frankly. Um, I want to just reiterate to the board the importance of thinking about equity and um, um, representation of homeowners when it is in regard to um, the Historical Preservation Commission. Um, I think that, you know, that's an incredible group of volunteers and unfortunately, there isn't any representation of homeowners, given the emphasis of professionals, I believe, on the board. And I think that um, you know, I just urge you all, when you are implementing this great work that Susan has presented, to consider us, because at the end of the day, this is my life. And um, my savings, my everything goes into this home. And so that's a big thing for me. I'm sorry. It's been a big day. It's so embarrassing. Um, anyway, big day. I'm a mom and came home from work. Um, hung out with her and then here I am with you guys. And so I just want to reiterate this importance because it's my entire life savings and I don't necessarily have the same funds, unfortunately, that the rest of maybe Maplewood on these bidding war estates that we see so often have. So that's all. I moved here um, in part, honestly, I moved to this place because I thought how wonderful it would be to be so engaged in the Historical Preservation Commission. I thought that that was an opportunity to be involved. And unfortunately, we haven't gotten that. It's so embarrassing. Breaking down in front of the mayor, it's great. Great. But anyway, I just wanted to reiterate. Um, this is very deep to my heart, obviously. So I just urge you to think about that in whatever policymaking in the future that you are considering. Thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you for your clearly heartfelt comments. We appreciate that. Now we'll turn to Bobby Powell. Please share your address and go ahead with your questions or comments.
Hi, uh, I'm at forty-eight Pearson Road. I was wondering about, uh, I'm reviewing the master plan and there's a section in here about affordable housing. Uh, designated a portion of the Maplewood Country Club property for multifamily. Um, so I was wondering, is this a plan that's actually in action or when would this take action under, like what circumstances? Uh, it also says that it cannot be built on a floodplain, which, you know, looking out my window, every time it rains, I can see the entire golf course is flooded. So has it been evaluated as a floodplain?
Mayor Duffus, would you like to take this one?
I get the hard ones, huh? Uh, no.
Oh, you could probably do this in your sleeve.
Uh, this is a fair question. So um, I will try to summarize because there's a lot of history there. Uh, and thank you, uh, Mr. Powell for, for your comment. So there is an entity called the Fair Share Housing. And that is the entity that regulates affordable housing in the state of New Jersey, for better or for worse. And there's a long history of how we got to this entity being the entity that makes decisions for all municipalities. All municipalities are required to go to fair share housing and reach a settlement in affordable housing. It is based and tailor-made to the municipality itself. Our size, our available vacant land, our green spaces, our density, and so on and so forth. So one size does not fit all. We were required uh, to do so uh, and are currently uh, going to be looking at our new renegotiated settlement uh, in twenty twenty-five. Every municipality in New Jersey is under this. So when Maplewood went before the judge, Fair Share Housing, it's not actually a judge per se, the magistrate. Um, and they said, this is how many uh, uh, units we've built in housing since whatever time. And these are how many units we think we're going to be able to build realistically by twenty twenty-five. Fair Share Housing said, okay, let's look at Maplewood. Let's look at your density. Let's look at your vacant property. Let's look at your green spaces. Let's look at your, you know, what does Maplewood look like?
Add another layer of comfort to your bed with the Amazon Basics.
Alrighty, someone is shopping on Amazon, a lot more fun. Uh, so uh, so anyway, so Fair Share Housing came back to us and they said, okay, you gotta, you gotta build X amount by twenty twenty-five. And I'm, and I'm proud to report that we are on track uh, to meet that number. But what Fair Share Housing also did in doing so, because we are so small, they uh, gave us a credit towards that number by using vacant land available. And the vacant land includes the golf club. So they created what's called an overlay zone. A zone on top of an existing zone that allows, that creates other opportunities, in this particular case for the golf club, if, if you're not asleep yet. Um, the golf club is uh, seventy-three percent of the golf club is, the golf area, I should say, is in a floodplain. Less than thirty percent of it is developable land. So is, is this something that's happening right now? No. Is it something that could happen with this overlay zone that we were required to put into place sometime in the future? If the golf club were to be sold or go out of business, yes. But it would only apply to thirty percent or less of the entire acreage of the golf club. I believe it's about eighty-six acres, eighty-three acres or so. And you know, only thirty percent or less of that would be developer, developable. And you know, we pushed back against this requirement from Fair Share Housing. And we said, okay, if you're going to require this, then we're going to make sure it's low density. So you can't have um, a lot of density in that reduced footprint for development if that should ever happen. But it's not something that's happening anytime soon. I hope that explains it.
Uh, so if I understand it correctly, the first thing that would have to happen is the golf, of course, would have to vacate. So they would either sell or leave some, something of that nature. Uh, and then can we see the floodplain evaluation? Is that documented somewhere? Like which part is developable?
Sure, that, that should be available somewhere. We can get you that.
Uh, okay.
Yeah.
Who would I reach to?
You should reach out to, and the engineering department would have that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we can connect you, sir. If you send me an email tomorrow, I will connect you to engineering and they can get you that information. But yes, it would have to be that the golf club is, is going out of business or they're selling and a developer comes along and says, oh, this is so attractive for me to build in a floodplain. Yeah, let's do this, man. Um, so all of that would have to happen in order for something like this to actually be something that we should be worried about.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks.
You're welcome.
If there are any other members of the public who have any um, comments that they want to share or questions that they want to ask? Again, please use the raise your hand function and Linda, please go ahead again. You're on mute again. Let's see if I can take you, uh, go ahead and take yourself off mute and then you can, there you go.
Okay, so I want to answer a question from, is it Bobby or? Okay. So you know, I, as you heard before, or you did not, I lived, I lived on Burnett Street for forty-five years. And it's gotta be thirty-some odd years ago, they wanted to build affordable housing be, behind the houses on Burnett Street, going down to the country club. Which is a lot of land. Uh, the access would have been, there's a paper street on the other side of Maple. And it took one family to refuse to sell their property. So it's not like, you know, it doesn't have to the country club doesn't have to sell their property. It could happen. So I, I just think that people, people who live in Gulf Island have to just be aware of this possibility. So it's not only the country club being, you know, yes, it gets flooded when it rains, but there's also a bunch of land that the country club owns, but they can't sell. And it's, to me, it's, it's, it's always been a big issue. And like you said, at the time, and yeah, yeah, it is a long time ago for most people. But it is, it is a possibility that, you know, if you go down, if you walk along the country club towards Baker, there's a lot of land that is, you know, people, somebody can build on. And yes, there are roads which are called, like I said, paper streets, that they can build behind us. So it's, it's something that I think everybody's got to just keep an eye on. Yes, if the country club goes under. Yes, if the country club goes under, it'll be a big issue for Gulf Island, but of course for Maplewood. But it's something that we should keep an eye on. Because it's a possibility. The possibility that the whole, I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, that's okay. Just I want to be able to get to everybody.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That's okay. Um, so now, uh, we'll hear from Josh Weistuck. And I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Please, uh, give us your address and share your questions or comments.
You got the name correct. Uh, Josh Weistuck, I'm at eighty-eight Tuscan Road. Um, I just want to echo the sentiment that, um, Kate, uh, mentioned earlier. I hear a lot of Pearson folks, so I'm just another voice on the historic front. Um, there's a lot of unknown. There's a lot of things that aren't clear on what we can and can't do as affordable homeowners and everything does seem to sound like dollar signs. So, um, to that extent, more clarity, which doesn't cost any money, um, on the town side. So I think there's ways to make the historic commission, um, you know, and I think it should be in collaboration with homeowners, um, when we take into account those recommendations. So we're here, we're ready to speak, um, and we would love to be included in that conversation, uh, along with the historic commission. So if the town council can facilitate that, um, friendly conversation, that would be great. Um, and I, it sounds like I hear a lot of dissent on affordable housing. Um, I go to the train, I take the train to the city and I see a lot of nannies. I see a lot of workers. I see a lot of great people coming to Maplewood. Oh, thank you. Who can't afford to live here and it's a diverse community and it should be diverse in a lot of ways, including, um, where people come from, uh, economic wise. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, David Kagan, please go ahead.
Hi, sorry, I'm gonna mute myself. Um, first of all, thank you. Um, I live at forty-five Salter, so I'm a twelve-year taxpayer of Maplewood. I've definitely seen a lot of change, but um, I mostly just want to stand in support of withdrawing the retail note from the mill. I think that this is a thoughtful approach. The traffic there is bad already. Um, Ellen had mentioned the speeders. The other thing, um, just in addition to, you know, obviously concerns about the traffic that we face already, that if you don't live here, you may not notice. And there is a sign there preventing it, but of course it doesn't stop it, which is that it is not, Gulf Island is not meant to be a place for trucks to use Burnett and Salter and Pearson to do, to turn around. But it happens all the time. And there's a sign there saying that it's prohibited. And when we start adding businesses and we start adding deliveries, we start adding restaurants, gas stations, stores, whatever would happen down there, it would get even worse. And so that just adds an extra element of something that's happening already of trucks that come up there. They have nowhere else to turn because they can't turn at the end of Pearson and Valley. So they literally go up, they make a right onto Burnett. They make a left onto South Mountain, a left onto Salter, a left onto Pearson and back out to Valley. And I see it all the time. So that's just another element that if you don't live here, you may not see that all the time. That would be even a larger concern. And for all the people talking about, oh, we need to walk this stuff, we need to walk this stuff. I don't know, like if they live on Gulf Island, maybe they're forgetting about the lovely village with lots of pizzerias, lots of nail stores, lots of places to get coffee, lots of places to get pastries, all very walkable. Um, it's there already. We have it. And by the way, we have open storefronts. Uh, we have businesses that have gone out and have not been replaced. So, you know, there's obviously maybe not the demand for retail that they keep talking about, that they have to have retail everywhere. We have, we have plenty of retail. We also retail the people, obviously, we're not visiting and spending their money at because we have open storefronts to many towns. So anyway, I appreciate the thoughtfulness of withdrawing the, the plan and, um, I appreciate all your hard work from this committee, um, and your dedication. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kagan. I also want to point out to Mr. Powell, um, that, uh, remember the planning board, Mr. Frye added to the chat a FEMA source for flood maps. Um, so you should be able to use that to see, um, the, the floodplain, uh, that affects the country club and even the memorial park.
Chairwoman, may I also add, uh, some additional commentary on that?
Certainly.
I just wanted to complete my answer that I gave previously as it relates to the golf course overlay zone. Uh, I pulled out my notes. Um, I take very detailed notes. And, uh, I just wanted to further edify the record since this is being recorded, um, that the low density that we were able to negotiate successfully with Fair Share Housing for the thirty percent or less developable land, uh, on the golf course is eight units per acre with a twenty percent set aside on top of that. Um, those aren't economics that most developers are gonna, you know, chomp at, if you will. Uh, but, but that is our low-density negotiation and, um, we're gonna fight to keep that in the next round, uh, in the July twenty twenty-five round, a renegotiation with Fair Share Housing. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Mayor Duffus. Uh, all right. At this point, I think we have, um, heard from uh, all the members of public who have, who have asked to be heard. If there's anyone else, this is indeed your last opportunity to comment on the master plan. So going once. Price? Andrew Padilla, please, uh, share your address and go ahead with your comments.
Hey, um, so I live at three Fairview Terrace in Maplewood, New Jersey, and I support, um, extending this to become, uh, more retail nodes. Um, because I think, you know, bringing new business, bringing more people into Maplewood is a good thing. And I think that having another smaller town center in, that people can walk to, um, close to the middle school, close to the high school. I think it's in a good area that would allow people, uh, more community to come together. And I would love to see more shops open up with the greater variety rather than pizzerias, coffee places, maybe some other small businesses.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, Mr. Doug Greenfield, Greenfeld, sorry, please go ahead.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Um, so I spoke, uh, last meeting, I won't repeat my comments.
Can you share your address, please?
Sure, I'm sorry. I am at six ninety-two Valley Street.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, right, so I won't repeat, um, my comments and all the reasons I gave last meeting.
I'm, I'm sorry, Doug. Uh, what are we looking at?
I, I'm not sure what just happened.
Is there a, there seems to be a share screen, somebody sharing a screen.
Oh, that's not me.
No, I know.
Katie Henry, it says we're viewing Katie Henry's screen. I'm not sure how that happened, but could Ms. Henry, please, um, stop sharing your screen?
That's a new one.
Oh, all right. Well, it's gone now, so. All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Greenfeld, please go ahead.
Sure, um, I just want, so I'll, I'll start over, which is that I spoke last meeting about the, uh, in opposition to the rezoning of the property um, at Pearson and Valley to neighborhood retail. And I won't repeat all the reasons, uh, that I gave last meeting. Um, I did want to, um, add that, um, given the, uh, low residential density around the site, um, the only viable, uh, retail use would most likely be auto-oriented. Um, just because there isn't enough walkable market nearby to support that. And so, um, that is my additional comment. And, um, so there's not enough, um, residential density and there's not a retail agglomeration, right? There is something in economics called agglomeration where when you cluster a bunch of, um, businesses that are similar nearby, they collectively attract more business. So there's not a lot, enough land if you're just putting a small retail node there, it doesn't create that agglomeration. So there are multiple reasons why, um, anything that went in there would be auto-oriented and that's the reason for the opposition to that being a, a retail zone is because of all the nuisances associated with the, um, auto orientation. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Greenfeld. Any other members of the public who wish to share comments or questions?
All right then. Chair Peshada, I just wanted to call your attention. There happened a couple comments in the chat. I don't know if you.
Uh, yes, so, so there have, and I, I have been kind of keeping, uh, some tabs on the, um, on the chat. Thank you to Mr. Frye for providing the, um, the flood maps. Um, Mr. Kelly, uh, agrees with the idea of, uh, retail. Uh, I assume that he is, he's specifically references Ridgewood Avenue. I'm assuming that he's um, thinking of the area that we've been talking about for a while now, uh, at Pearson and Valley, but I don't know for sure. Um, and then, uh, Ms. Bailey is asking if the planning board will entertain further written comments or is the comment period closing tonight? The comment period is closing this evening. Um, and so this is, uh, people's last opportunity to comment on the draft. Um, and given that we have, uh, it looks like we will have time permitting, the planning board will be deliberating, uh, about whether or not to adopt the plan this evening. So, um, if there's any further comments that anyone wants to make, um, I encourage you to, um, well, the chat is helpful. Uh, it's even better to, to hear from you. So please, uh, use the raise your hand function. And I will gladly call on you to hear any further comments. All right, then at this time, I'm going to close the public comment section of the hearing. And we can indeed open it up to, uh, deliberation by members of the planning board. Members of the public are welcome to stay and listen. However, the deliberations of the planning board are for planning board members only. Um, and members of the public are no longer welcome to comment at this time. Are there any members of the planning board who wish to share their thoughts on the draft, um, as it stands, uh, with the edits that BFJ has made over the course of the past month? And some of the final edits that have been discussed this evening with respect to two-family housing, with respect to the athletic fields? Um, and Ms. Pavati, if I'm, I suspect I'm missing some others. Is that it?
I, that, that's all I have is the two, um, the two items on two-family zoning, uh, two-family homes and then the adjustments to the language on athletic fields.
Okay, so, um, Ms. Adams, please go ahead.
Yeah, I don't want to drag this out at all by any stretch since it's been dragged out enough as we all know. But I, I worry a little about, um, making sure we're all on the same page. And I'd be more comfortable, um, approving a final draft. So in other words, to incorporate, to get a final document that has all of the stuff that was talked about tonight. All of the changes over the last month. Cause I feel like we're not all a hundred percent on, you know, knowing exactly what we're approving. So I guess, you know, whether it's typos, township committee, not town council, all that kind of stuff, even the smallest stuff, without further public comment at the next meeting, just, um, you know, seeing exactly the night, the final document like in a couple of weeks and then voting on that at the next meeting. Would that be, is that obnoxious of me to ask for, or am I just being a little more, I, you know, cause I, because there's so much like kind of out there. I, I'm not comfortable voting on it tonight, frankly. Somebody back me up.
I have, I have.
Since we're voting on an official document, I would agree. I think it's important that we see the final document.
I, I have to agree as well.
I just have a question. Is the next meeting in September? Does that mean we're waiting two months? No, there isn't.
No, the next meeting, the next meeting is in August. And, um, so that would be when we would address it. The public comment period is now closed. So there would not be further public commentary in writing or, um, or virtually. Um, that is an option for us.
Is it impossible to have a special session with the planning board so we don't have to lose a whole month? Are we amenable to finding a time that we can get a quorum prior to an August meeting to finalize this matter?
That is a possibility. Um, Ms. Lewis, what would be the timeframe for that, given the requirement to, uh, provide public notice of such a special meeting?
Well, I, I would ask Board Attorney Edelson. If we were going to be picking a new date from scratch, then I suppose, uh, notice would be required if a date was selected tonight. I'm not sure, Michael, could we carry notice? Mr. Edelson?
Yes, if you set the date now, you just carry the, the notice. You would, you would announce that it's continued to that date and there'll be no further notice.
Unless we just carried it to August eighth.
Or you could carry it to August eighth.
Yeah, my question would be, is there, I mean, there's no huge rush, doesn't, like a special meeting might be harder to schedule. So if we don't have a quorum available on August eighth, because it's August, um, then we could set, so maybe there's like a raise your hand if you can be here August eighth situation. Or otherwise, a special meeting. Or are there any implications to delaying the vote any further? I mean, what is the, what is the bigger picture of just waiting until the next meeting? Is there any type of timeline that we're working against as it relates to our confirming alignment on the, the master plan?
When is the date of our next planning board meeting?
Our next, Tuesday, August eighth.
Tuesday, August eighth. Okay, I think we should wait for that. By that time, the planning firm will have the opportunity to incorporate all of tonight's comments and circulate with sufficient time to everyone to review a final copy of our new master plan. And there will be no excuses. All of us are volunteers and we have a lot of things going on and second jobs and three jobs. Uh, and vacation is around the corner for a lot of us, but you know, we are committing to this and we've committed to this process and we put a lot of, um, you know, sweat equity into this process for the past seventeen months. So, you know, be ready on August eighth. No more, no more, uh, extensions. That's how I feel about it.
That's fine. Um, we will have other items on our agenda for August eighth. Uh, I believe Ms. Lewis has applications that, uh, applicants that she has notified that, um, they'll be able to present at the August eighth meeting. So, um, as long as we have a quorum, we will be, uh, in a good position to, um, to review the final document, uh, between now and then, and then, um, take final vote, uh, and any further deliberations and final vote on August eighth.
Chair Peshada and Mayor Duffus, um, we, I think we can commit to getting you a revised draft within the next couple of weeks. I know I'm going on vacation in between now and August eighth, so I'd love to get it off of my plate. Um, we've already annotated the full PDF document with every single change, so, um, it's just really a matter of going into the file and making the change. Um, I, I will request, unless you all feel strongly, um, we were not going to do track changes just because in a layout, it's very difficult to do that. It's not a Word document. It's, it's a graphic layout document and it just would throw everything off and be very, very time-consuming. Um, we can give you, you know, a rundown of every change if you'd like. Um, or you could, you could just sort of, um, you know, compare it with the July seventh document. We'll, we'll try to figure out a way to make it easy for you to see the changes, um, but they'll all be there.
That's very helpful. Thank you. Um, all right, well, um, go ahead, Ms. Adams.
All right. I was just gonna say to, um, Susan.
All right, I was just gonna say to Susan that I don't, I think in the final document, it's just the final document. And then you can, you know, attach the last draft or something, so, or the, or the list of changes. But I wouldn't expect, you know, if we're gonna vote on it, it needs to be like
Pretty clean.
All the spelling corrections and whatever is in there, right? So that, that the board can just approve it and not with any amendments.
I'd also, before we conclude this evening, I just want to thank the members of the public who offered their comments and thoughtful questions. Um, I hope that questions have been resolved to your satisfaction and just make it clear that indeed the public commentary on the master plan is now closed. And so at the August eighth meeting, there may be further deliberation among the members of the planning board. But, uh, but at this point, the public commentary is closed. And then hopefully the, the planning board will vote on the final document at the August eighth meeting. All right, um, with that, then the only other item on our agenda this evening is an opportunity for any member of the public who wants to address the planning board on any other issue to, again, use the raise your hand function. If you have any questions or comments for the planning board in general. And seeing none, I'm happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
And to second.
Second, second.
All right, then we're done. I look forward to seeing everyone on Tuesday, August eighth. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Bye, everyone.
Night.
Bye.
Good night.